Okay, seven o'clock, we'll call on the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Barnes County North School Board meeting to order. We have maybe a couple additions or change on the agenda, Mr. Curry?
Yep, we need to, just because it's some discussion, we need to move G librarian teacher position to after negotiations board strategy. We need to add also under there another letter, what would it be, Mike?
J.
J of, just staffing, you can put under that one, and then above that where G is, add open enrollment.
Which is an I, yeah. Cover all our letters.
Oh, I was gonna go above, so.
Right.
H and G flip flop, I, and then J, got it.
Yeah.
Any others that we have? If not, we need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All the favor approval of amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that is approved. Next is our consent agenda, which is our minutes, bills, and financial reports, any questions on any of those items? Other comments or questions?
Did you have one?
Yeah.
No, not on the agenda, more on the student addition subtraction.
I said the numbers, he said the numbers don't add up, and it's because when you go under the district at your homeschool kids show, so they have a different code, and those were counted in this one.
Cause they added up the numbers it said in the class, and then it doesn't add up to the same numbers as students.
Yeah.
And so I'm assuming that's where it fell, because I noticed that too and checked.
Good. Any other questions on minutes, bills, or financial reports? Not, we would need a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
Hey Brett, is there a second? Jennifer? Roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay. Did you get your pay pretty form?
Nothing.
Administrative, anything to add to yours?
I'm just gonna, I got two real quick things, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Bryn. House Bill twelve seventy, the one that requires recording of regular meetings, technically that's only if requested by somebody to do that, even though we do it.
Okay.
Necessarily, it's a requested thing. And then HB, House Bill eleven twenty, which is not on your form, but starting, I'm assuming in August when these new bills come in play, we will probably have to add something to our agenda, cause this law requires school boards to provide an opportunity to recite the pledge of allegiance at every regular scheduled board meeting. Doesn't mean you have to, but if anybody wants to, they have to have that opportunity. So, but that's more of an August thing, other than that, unless you have any questions, like I said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Bryn.
Do you have any other questions? You got the floor, Tina.
Did you need me to put up the PowerPoints that you were sent, cause I, Kate?
I do not.
Okay.
I thought, I thought that was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like being able to see them early.
Nope, that's great, cause and I, after last year, I didn't want to waste everyone's time by just reading slide to slide to you. So, were there any questions on the fall/winter data that you guys, like, I try to make it as clear as possible, but I know sometimes it's as clear as mud.
So. It looked like almost every group was maybe not as, maybe their testing didn't go at the same rate as the state requires, or the state or the test requires the job.
Right.
But almost every group and every area was above proficiency.
Right, for their, are you talking the state testing for their scale score?
The first section of what you had before we went to the NDSA stuff.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, star.
Yes, so our, where our class averages were according to benchmark, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, our class averages are almost a hundred percent above where the benchmark is.
Okay, yep, I didn't see any glaring anything, so.
Okay.
And the NDSA with the brick background, a little hard to read there on the left side.
Yeah, so some people got the brick background.
Mine does not.
Mine doesn't have, mine's got that.
Yeah, it's hard to read on that side.
It's a white background, and we did notice some people.
Yeah, cause this is what mine looks like, I don't have the bricks.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, mine looks like.
So, I'm not sure why.
The way side column is tough to read, yeah.
Oh, I'm not sure why it said that way, cause yeah, mine's all white.
When I printed it, it printed white, too.
Yeah, cause I had a teacher comment on that, she goes, I can't read it, I'm like, it's.
Yeah, and it's sent to me and it opened just fine, too, so.
I do.
Yeah, it looks like that, and you can't.
Let's see.
I.
Yeah.
That's not what I put on.
It's here.
So, other than the display.
It's gotta be special, but.
Are there any concerns with this, because this didn't seem to be as rosy as the others have?
This state test never is as rosy.
Okay.
Um, we are, and I don't know, since we changed from Saxon math, which I know was a long time ago, to Go Math, we have noticed that our math testing numbers have not been as good. But now, remember, we've had three different tests since then, and next year will be the last year of this test, and then we'll have another new test based off of the new standards that were being written this year. So, it's kind of hard, too, to tell, because you're not comparing apples to apples when they keep changing the test.
So, star testing is more consistent then, that's more of a national type thing, where the state assessment is based on what the state finds to be.
Right, and on what the company has, cause I was asking those questions to, I was on the ELA Standards Writing Committee this year, and that was very interesting. But then we got asking how they choose the test questions, well, they choose the provider, and we're changing providers, I can't remember the name without.
Pearson is, is the new one coming out.
A plus.
A plus, NDA plus it'll be called, and it's, Pearson is working directly with North Dakota to develop it, and here's what North Dakota says, is they wanna do it really well, because they want other states to purchase it, right? So, like she said, it'll be new.
But then, too, depending on the companies like this one we're on now, you can only drop have a certain bank of questions. So, yes, we can adjust it to a small percentage to meet our standards, but when they're doing these tests for the nation, we don't get total say in our questions, they'll say, well, we can change it to this, but we can't change it to be that specific, if that makes sense.
Yep, and then, so you said the evolution from Saxon to Go, the Go maybe just isn't hitting certain areas that is being tested that time.
Right, right.
And then, um.
Yeah, and with some of it, and not an excuse, just some insight is, you know, with that state assessment, there's a testing window, and if you look at our testing window, it was, we had poor weather, so we were always behind where, how we were. You know, our original schedule was always getting thrown off kilter because of a storm day or something else, or.
And that circles back perfectly to what my request was last month, that board meeting, I had asked for feedback from both the high school principal and the elementary principal. And state, after you guys were going through this stuff with Mrs. Bryn's support, was, is, do you think there's any indicator that, cause some schools' philosophy is classroom intent in class is better, and they don't want to do as much e-learning? Do you think e-learning had any tilt in any of the testing?
Um, when we dug into the data this year, and I had an excellent conversation with Tina about it, what we noticed with trends in each grade level, so like she said, the first thing is, is the test has changed so many times that it's comparing apples to oranges. However, some things are similar, so we looked at where a group was one year in the assessment for fractions, they continued to, fractions be their lowest one, but I think double proficiency or growth.
Yep.
So, we're seeing the growth, but had I worried about like e-learning, cause I know right before Christmas, so you're at a certain point in your standards, we did not see a connection this year in, at that point, it's the standard. We usually see it in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tina, but geometry usually comes at the end, and data and graphing, so we'll usually see them a little bit lower, because it's usually after state testing, like he said, we have testing windows, and then that's taught after state testing is done, so that's typically where we see it, but the classes who are low in certain areas continue to be low in those same, so it's probably makeup of students and knowledge and a bunch of different factors, and not directly related to that for saying.
For example, our fifth graders this year, last year, zero students were proficient in numbers and operations of fractions, and this year it was still their lowest one, but we had four students who were proficient in it, that same group of students, so they're growing. It's just, that's still their lowest area.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, anything on the high school end of that to add on?
Um, I would say, because of the way that we do our online through the snow days, I know is a lot more than what other schools are doing. When I tell them that we just follow our bell schedule or whatnot, they're surprised that we're able to do that, that the staff was willing to do that, as far as that goes, so I think the numbers would. I would say on this one, though, just because of the chaos of, we lost those days that we were supposed to be tested, and then trying to hurry and put something back together, because we gotta fit it in with the window, that we're just pulling kids from classrooms and trying to get them done with the test of actually being prepared to take it, and not realizing that they were gonna take it, doesn't put them in a right frame of mind, and then talking with Ms. Schweitzer and Mrs. McGee yesterday about it, Mrs. McGee made the comment that she had prepared her kids for, I think, the argument.
Argumentative.
The argumentative, and it was the other one that.
Expository, that most of them got.
Cause they either get one or the other, and she, because the most common one that they get is the one that she had prepared them for, but then they all got the other one that they had spent time on at the beginning of the year, but she didn't really touch much on, and then they all got that one, so it's, it's a combination of things, but you know, it's something that we're gonna utilize to look to see how we're gonna revamp. I know they both did say that it's gonna be really, really nice having a set curriculum to be able to start using with the ELA purchase, rather than trying to put things together as they're going.
To hit the standards.
Any other questions for Tina on data? Anything you're seeing that you should bring up to us, that you're seeing anymore?
I don't think so, like I said, our, for the most part, our classes are doing very well, and they're above those benchmarks, so, yeah.
We did shift to show growth, because percentages might not ever change, because even though they're growing, so we are trying to shift the focus on the average growth in that skill score from year to year.
So, that's what title is changing the goal to?
Yes.
Instead of a certain percentage being proficient, or doing a certain percentage of the students are growing.
Yes.
In your skill score.
Which I think gives a more accurate picture long term.
Well, and it takes out some of the socioeconomic.
Yes, yep, and if we get a new student, it could change drastically from one area to another, but if you look, we tier our data, I showed that before, we have a really good percentage at advanced and proficient compared to intervention, so.
They have any other questions?
Well, yeah, I'm just kinda curious, cause yeah, cause they increase quite a bit the percentage of what's expected of them to, like on that one, where they go from eighty-three proficient in the end of the first trimester to seventy-one proficient at the end of the second, how much, what percentage do you increase what you expect out of them to get such proficiency drop at that level?
Yeah, and there is, because the expectations from fall to winter grow, and so we would have to look at specific benchmarks, but I share that in trimester newsletter, so it'll say what the benchmark is next to where we are to. And then we do, I mean, and I'm looking specifically at that one, like an addition of a student who comes in and is receiving interventions, and they take a star assessment after not, not being with our educators, it affects it, but we also want to know what skills they are understanding and what they aren't. So, that's why, but you realize you're looking at the old data right now. That she sent a while ago.
Well, that's data they sent me, so. You know, and that's the same, I'm just curious how it worked, you know?
So, and then what Tina focused on was growth from August to end of the year, instead of trimester two.
That one's not done yet, though, that one they don't have, because I still need for kids to finish testing. I don't have the end of the year, so.
That will be sent out.
Yeah, so no, I was just curious how it went, cause, you know, cause if you look at the average of words per minute, ninety-eight, and then a hundred and forty-five words per minute, and accuracy changes, but the proficiency drops, so you know that you got greater expectations, but they're not leveling up as much as your, but yet they're not decreased any, they're not losing ground, it's just.
Incorrect, and I want you to be aware that, um, so it's being taught to students, but we're progress monitoring some of the ones who need to be checked in on more often. And so you might see that, too, because oral reading fluency is actually new since we built our MTS test pathway, it helps us identify where a child is struggling, so that we can address it. And so it's, it's fairly new to them still, I think this is our second year, a full year of implementing the fluency side of it, and I mean, there's, there's a bunch of different reasons, but if we have concerns, we're progress monitoring them consistently and making sure they're getting the instruction, so.
Well, I'd say, I don't really doubt that, I just was looking at, you know, how the how the proficiencies change along with the expectations as, as the year progresses, and.
And you might see some kids grow just not as much as that proficient level.
Well, and that's kinda what I was relating that to, I guess, so, no, that's good.
We see that in the class average, Brett, cause our class average of how many words per minute or their scale score is increasing through the year, and if they weren't growing, that wouldn't be increasing either.
Right, and I, and I'd seen that, you know, the ninety, one was like a hundred and twenty at ninety-eight, or ninety-six, and then the next one went to a hundred and fifty at ninety-eight percent, so, no, the proficiencies are there, I'm just how it all, wait the score, so, all right, sounds good to me.
Mr. Wilson, do you have anything additional from your report, secondary or AD?
Uh, no, I will just, just state that for graduation issue, the ceremony, that it will just be you and Mr. Curry handing out the diplomas and turning over the tasks.
Okay.
Shift back to the way it was pre-COVID.
So, it's chaos. Cause we had done the parent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, Mrs. Bussie, anything additional in your report?
No, just that the students who traveled places for field trips and stuff represented the ECN extremely well, and everything went good, so.
Any questions on eBay principal?
No, I just want, e-learning attendance, kudos to our teachers and our students, cause, well, the one day, it was a hundred percent almost all the way through the elementary, so. It's amazing.
Yeah, it was good, and then it dipped, and then went back up again, so.
The comment on that is, our attendance rate on the e-learning is higher than.
Than our person in class?
Yes, yep.
Which.
It's.
Yeah, the one in here.
It's understandable, because it's easier to log in.
From wherever, yeah.
And be able to participate than, oh, I'll just ask, tell them on, I'm saying I can't go, so, whatever the reasons are.
Right, right.
It's just, the attendance rate is.
And most of the e-learning days, we were all stuck with them, so we could be there to support.
I guess I do have the years of service before Mr. Wilson goes, so I have them listed in here, and and of course, the two who have five-year pins aren't here, which is Cindy and Rob, but you guys get the I survived ones for their first year.
You could've told us we were getting I survived before we signed up for the job.
Yeah. So, thank you. And then all the years of service are listed in the report for you.
We got like Mike in at fifty.
I would have to double check, I checked with you one time over text, I think, right?
It's probably above some of them that were there.
Do they make pins for it?
Tina's at twenty, the other person.
What's that?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Am I really?
I didn't even wanna be that old.
Totally admit it.
Not much older than you.
Committee reports, budget, all them, is there any to report there, or we're gonna deal with them down the.
Yeah, if you wanna talk about that one later, Eric, unless you wanna, Eric may have some stuff on building grounds, transportation.
Okay.
Yeah, we met, what morning was that, Monday, one of the Mondays?
Yeah, a little Monday, week and a half ago, yeah.
Yeah, we, we had good talks just on funding, and where we're at transportation-wise, on how much of the budget's actually getting used, and how it's all working out. Budgeting fuel on that, and how we're handling those situations, buses is another thing. Just how many miles we put on a bus per year, and then how many miles you get on the lifespan of the bus, and as many routes as we're running, we almost need a bus every single year to maintain our fleet of buses.
That's kinda what had worked out before, I think, was a bus a year, kinda keeps.
And to me, in my head, it's like a bus a year gets us back up to date, but no, a bus a year never goes away. Like, you almost need to have a bus every single year with this amount of miles that the routes are putting on, so.
And there is no anticipated adjustment in the number of routes.
Cause I did. I mean, we, we talked about it a little bit, but that comes with maybe number of drivers.
Well, that and.
And.
Kids' time on the bus.
Right.
And what's the policy?
And that just, you can, you, yeah, that's exactly.
Would it be beneficial instead of big buses, some of these routes going down to the mini bus, or update Suburbans and stuff, or?
That was a big part of it, too, on just how do we get, how do we get drivers in the buses, too, with the mini buses, cause you don't have to have a CDL for that.
Right.
And then what are the buses getting used for, and how are they getting rotated, and the other vehicles that the school has? And I wasn't aware that their, the drivers are taking those vehicles back home, and that's mainly what those are getting used for, and yeah, there's probably some updating on those to where they're, if it's just used for an individual to drive themselves back home, they don't, having them as a suburban makes you think that they're there for field trips and student use, and that's not.
Just a courtesy vehicle.
Yeah, and if they're courtesy vehicles, they should just be something easy to buzz around in, I guess, I don't know. There's, there seems to be some updating and management on those vehicles that needs to take place, though, because they're not, they're not gonna work for people to hop in and go to the cities or go on long routes with.
No, last year we didn't buy a bus, correct?
Correct, well, we got a new bus last year.
But we paid for it in the year.
Paid for it, right.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, I mean.
You know, and part of the issue is looking at, would it be more beneficial to maybe buy a mini? Yes, but is it worth it, because it's a twenty thousand dollar difference, to buy a mini as compared to a forty-seven seventy passenger for that? I mean, that's the hard thing about it, is the price has gotten so crazy on them, and even if you ordered one now, you're not getting it for a year and a half.
These ones over here, are they workable?
I don't know, he was gonna see what value they had, and if they're not, you're gonna be part of the fleet to get rid of them.
Yeah.
So, we don't have.
Same thing, I think we were talking about with some of our vehicles as well, too, seeing what we could, you know, whether it's an auction, or how we could do it, and maybe recoup some funds to purchase something else that's maybe more usable and works better for the district. On those, I know he's working on a couple now, that he's hoping to get back up and running, so we have two or three spares, or if we need a mini, we can throw a CDL driver. That's what, that's what hurts us the most, in my opinion, is we have CDL drivers that are taking the mini buses, when if they can jump in a big one, it frees up those mini buses for the non-CDLs.
Correct.
And you, Bud said there was somebody that was looking to get their CDL, right? A driver potentially that.
Yeah.
Mentioned that they were gonna get their CDL and, you know, possibly be able to drive a bus. I don't know, do you know anyone that's gone through that, since they've changed it? Is it as bad as what they say?
Yes, it is. It's about six, seven thousand dollars, forty hours of classroom time.
And it's not on your own classroom, you have to go somewhere?
You have to go somewhere, it's four, it's a three-week, three-week course. The first week is forty hours classroom time, usually in Fargo or Bismarck. Second week is when you come home, you do all of your medical cards, you're permitting all, everything you need to do there. Third week is another forty hours of drive time with an instructor, then you can go take your test.
It is a.
But that's about six, seven thousand dollars.
And there's no chatter at the state level?
Oh, there's tons of chatter about it, that.
But if it is that hard, we're never gonna get new CDLs.
It's gonna be hard.
It's gonna be hard.
In our industry, it's hard finding drivers that are legal now, and it's gonna get worse.
She don't need a CDL to be a bus driver, you need a Class B.
To drive something over X number of pounds, which a lot of our buses are, you need a CDL.
Cause they got a Class B license for buses, too, right?
If you're under a certain number of pounds.
Twenty-six thousand.
You might have Class B with a passenger endorsement.
For the minis, the basic ones.
For the.
No, I'm saying Class B would work for the minis.
Minis, you just need a driver's license.
Just plan.
Driver's license, and then you're.
Yeah, anyone could drive.
Yeah.
I, you know what, you know.
Is there different regulations to get a Class B than a CDL then?
Same process, it's a Class A commercial license. That's where I'm wondering if beneficial moving towards those going forward, because it's gonna be harder and harder to get drivers, too.
And you get.
It's hard already, now with all this.
Bring everybody from everywhere.
We tried all last year at the vocational center to get a driver that does some shuttling, we didn't get any.
Right.
We had to have both driving all half the day.
Not only that, the cost to the district when we're running ten routes, and if we need to.
Double it.
Well, not double the routes, but even get people certified to drive. For seven thousand dollars a pop.
Right.
Any questions, anything else, Eric?
The one other comment was, the, the budget that they're going on, and the way it's been budgeted the last few years, the price of that bus has kind of been included into that budget. So, the fact of having to update a bus every year, it's not gonna add to where we've been spending it, that's already kind of.
Right, we've kind of plugged that in.
That, that number's been in there, so.
We, we've been buying about a hundred dollars roughly, give or take a little every year, since.
I guess, just one other thing, and I think Bud had checked with Eric on it, whether it's a good price or not, but diesel, what, three forty? So, I think we're gonna purchase some. Right now, at that price.
In this fiscal year.
We're gonna put, yes, in this fiscal year, cause if we purchase it now, we have to pay now to get that price.
Ten thousand gallons, or twenty?
Uh, I, yeah, we might go all twenty of it to do it, because the benefit of going much lower, what we think, isn't as great of the flip side, where if it went much higher, we have more to lose on that side than we have to gain on the other side, so we might just do it all right now.
Ten shouldn't go down as much as you'd hope.
You've probably got a realistic range of three to five dollars, and for a three forty, there's a lot more upside.
Right, yeah, and that's, yeah.
I would agree with that.
Okay, and the rest we'll handle later, committee reports, Mr. Curry, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so roll to miscellaneous committee type stuff, family connection.
They had a good turnout, I was not able to attend, and I don't have final numbers on how many of people and all that, but I will hopefully have that for June.
It was good. Thank you.
Career and tech, I got a little longer, I even typed some things out, so. Start with.
Cause we can't read his writing, remember?
Right. We got, finally got, to start out, we're in negotiations, I won't touch base on that till we're done, we finally got our eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, audit reports back from the state, so the state is taking audit reports again. Over the summer, some of the summer. Over the summer, some of the summer projects, because we're looking at the addition, we're gonna just do a little bit of landscaping around there. Carpet the resource room, which is the center of the building that wouldn't be touched, and only paint areas that are not affected by as we go to remodel, so. But our biggest work over the summer is gonna be working on getting the automation set up in the greenhouse. That's the big thing, and we're doing it all with our janitorial staff. We're not hiring anything else. Construction, they're finishing up right now, they're, where we're at is, uh, there was a, kind of like a dog kennel thing, they're just working up, it's for Tanya Schloppman, she's taking that. We've got the cabin that we looked to for a project over about, it was Christmas time. Josh Schroeder's doing that, we've got a, we're kind of buttoning it up for the summer right now, getting it all shelved, sheeted, not sided, but buttoned up so it's weather tight. This will be, and they'll go back working on that in the fall. He's gonna move that about somewhere when the movers are between October and Thanksgiving time, so we're gonna work on that some there. We're gonna look at the, Larry Robinson's looking at a shed garage where we can do concrete, a little bit, he's just south of town, so we could do an onsite thing for that. That's what we're looking at in construction. Roll into the egg. The four students that are graduating from NDSU already had jobs set up in December before they even graduated. So right now there's fourteen open positions, so we're gonna have to try to find it with transition to teaching, which is not the recommended way, or pulling somebody from another location, which we're trying to work with. IT, we had a little interest in that, offered the position, he declined, and we're looking at options on that, don't have anything more from that one. So I'll roll into a little bit, these are gonna be more numbers than anything else, but I just want you to, House Bill 1019, which is the one that CTE requested forty million dollars to offset the inflationary costs from the grants that were. Well, that got removed from the bill to ensure the rest of the CTE funding would pass, which it did. That included 3.5 million cost to continue the same reimbursements that we had in the past, so that didn't change. One and a half million of the three million that was asked for, for work-based learning coordinators. It's like Mrs. Boats' does, she places people out in the industry. That is gonna get funded between this one and a half and three. We will not be able to, Bush grants, which we have in the past, so it's kind of a wash. We can't use Bush grants for that anymore. The request for the additional fund for the inflationary thing basically got taken down to 26.5 million, what Senate Bill 2015 approved, along with House Bill 1021. Long story short, we went through all this at the, it's gonna give us about a thirty percent increase to all the approved projects, so our 3.1 goes to right about four million. And we do have one-to-one match to cover the four million. So from that discussion, starting here, we've kind of set up a timetable, we're starting with Brian Durgan, architect. Gonna start meeting with us here in May, first part of June, working away, getting all everything ready for the bid process. We're talking with Kraus Anderson for consulting on, we're gonna look at them on a construction day, or have some input on that. They work with Valley City, they're also working with Litchfield Marion right now, he's worked on forty-three school projects. We're gonna interview, visit with him. So basically, our timetable is to start here, first part of June with the prep, we want a bid come close to the end of the year, around Christmas, January, for a ground break in the spring, about a year from now. We're still gonna have to, because the regular plan we had was close to five million, we still gonna have to prioritize a little bit, because we got four. And we couldn't have got the five anyway without more, working more on a cost. Match. So, that's about where we're at down there.
About five million, uh, cost, is that on current prices, or is that?
No, that's when we put the plan in, when we put the plan in, our wish list type of setup came to estimates of five million. We could only get cost share of four point three, so we couldn't have got the five, so we cut her back a little bit, hoping for that. But then when the, we don't know where, we have no idea until we start working on this replan here, what, anything numbers would be.
So we'd think maybe sixty to eighty percent of what our wish list was, could potentially.
And we've talked about, we've talked about what we could take out and what we could add, and we've been working on that, and that'll start more as our group gets together here first part of June. Get some drawings together. That's what we got down there, vocational center. If there's any questions. A lot of questions, I don't have a lot of answers. Mr. Curry, Cheyenne Valley Special Ed.
Two biggest things are just filling open positions right now, which Tracy's, uh, getting some of them filled, still working hard on doing that before she leaves. Andrea, the incoming, was around last week, I think. Mrs. Bussie and Mr. Wilson met her, got to meet her last week, and then, just like everybody, negotiations is our hot topic right now. For that, we've met once, we met last week, and then we meet again next week, round two, hopefully not too many more.
That's where vocational is too, we met like about four times, we're hoping to be getting that locked in. Okay. Nothing under unfinished, moved to new bit tuition agreement?
Um, this one is three students coming from Jamestown.
That make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Michelle. Any other discussion, if not, roll call.
Long as they behave.
Cody?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Sick bank policy is brought up to reopen, who's gonna take on that? Mr. Schaefer, or?
Yeah, we decided as the committee for the, um, the sick bank committee to set up a meeting to open the policy for discussion on amending. That's what we're looking for.
What would you guys like to amend on it?
We have it approved, and we just need, um, the board to approve, open it up. Because we need both parties to approve to open up the policy.
It's not in the negotiated agreement, but it's in there that both parties have to agree to make a change. They're looking to ask to make a change, so we have to, we would have to open up that portion to visit about. That's what they're asking, in a nutshell.
So that's what I'm asking, what do you want to change?
Uh, we want to add agreement for immediate banning. To allow teachers to apply to that bank for agreement.
So we would need a motion for this group to, if you're okay with, to open it.
Is that what we say? Make a motion to open the sick bank policy for discussion?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Perfect. I'll make that motion, then.
Second.
Right?
You're the second she-motioned.
Michelle, Brett. How do you see that happening on our side for discussion, that who's going to be that group that would?
Approved, disapproved, discussed with?
Discuss whatever.
I guess I would say that would be the negotiation committee that's already working on that, correct?
We're not working on that part.
Well, you could, while you're at it. Why don't you throw that in the bucket while you're at it?
You did have your own committee for that.
We had the, I think you had the policy committee in the last time, wasn't it?
Yep, I believe so.
It was the policy committee last time.
What do you recommend as presidentate? Should we leave them then?
I'm open to what you guys want to do there. Discussion was laid out. Last time the policy committee worked on that, you know, it took a while, so.
Well, right.
But that, they brought that back. That's who did it last time, on our side.
Well, I would say we should probably just leave it in their capable hands and being they handled it last time.
Would that be part of the motion?
They would, they would amend it along with the teachers then, and then come back to the board for.
There would be a recommendation back to the board.
Yeah, from that committee, from that group, or whatever you want to call it.
Two parties together.
So we would come with a recommendation to the board for that policy change.
Because it does have to be approved by both sides, yes.
Wouldn't have to be changed every other year going forward, no?
No, the policy's there, they just want to open it up to make that a change.
A little adjustment to there.
And we have to do it together.
Let's put it in the policy committee hand. Do we need a motion for that, or?
They wonder if you wanted to add that to the motion.
I can add that to the motion.
Amend the motion.
I will amend the original sick bank policy motion to open for discussion, and now the motion, is that how I say it? And now the motion will be to.
Politic committee.
Motion to open sick bank policy for discussion and have. And have the policy committee do that?
We might need a Robert's rules order.
Yeah. Not really sure.
I'll second the amendment to the original.
Can we say have the policy committee?
Yes.
Now we have to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, better.
Everybody clear on what we're gonna vote on?
Well, you have to vote on the amendment first.
So Michelle made that amendment, do we have a second?
I did second.
All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Now, complete motion, everybody understands what we're voting on? We can do roll call now.
Cody?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brett?
Oh, sure.
Clarify, so what's our table to do? Do we need to do that before we move into the rest of negotiations, or what's your thought, Mr. Schaefer?
I think we can set the meeting right before negotiations on next Monday.
Set that before?
The policy committee would like to do that at six o'clock.
Yep.
So we can hash that out for negotiations.
I was gonna say, I think we're at six.
I think we're at six.
We're at six.
Negotiations.
Negotiations at six?
Yes.
Yeah, we're next Wednesday at six. Can we do 5:30? Is that enough time, you think? I'm asking because from what you just said, it should be enough time.
You guys worked on last time, how much time?
I'm gonna come in at 3:30.
Last time it took a lot.
It took a lot.
Well, it did take a lot, but it went from this to this to that, so this, if it's a, they, what he just said, if it's what Mr. Schaefer said before we opened it up.
It's all open now, not just the one I said.
No, I realize that, but if that's.
But it should be this little kid.
Yeah, shouldn't be that big of a deal. Up to you, Mr. Schaefer, is a half an hour enough?
I would say an hour.
I would say you need an hour.
Okay, well, I'm fine with that, I didn't.
Or we can go 5:30 and 6:30.
So bumping into the next meeting, you're dragging them down.
Is there another one after us?
Negotiations.
Well, we're at six. I'm saying they could go 5:30, we could go 6:30, I'm saying, if it, if it's a work-related.
Oh, no, I, I have no problem.
You gotta quit adjusting everybody else's schedule here.
I'm just checking, I know.
Five o'clock, Casey. Okay. Now, uh, you remember what we discussed on what I'd like to, to hear first, when we talked about it, Mike, right?
What do you like to hear first?
With, uh, with what you guys are looking at doing, what I would like to have you guys bring to the.
Oh, for max, or, yeah, we were talking about, we brought it up, we're open.
The lighting part of it?
We, and we'll talk about that probably later on.
The session here?
Yeah.
Okay, so just so that, we can maybe get it done within an hour.
Right.
What we talked about is looking at, if we opened this up, we talked about, and we told them at that time, that we would probably be looking at the cap of hours in that sick bank. Max, days or whatever, hours, we go by hours now, so. That's something we gotta come up with, so when we go there, that we have to have that, yes.
And not just, uh, what we're looking for, not just an arbitrary number, we want.
Right.
Looking at.
How to do it.
You guys are comfortable budgeting.
Yes.
So.
Are you wanting that budget in a dollar understanding, or in?
Well, just, just an estimation of what you guys are comfortable with.
Okay.
Is what we're looking for. Because if we're just gonna do arbitrary numbers, then that hour's not gonna be.
No, this is gonna be defined.
Right, we're gonna have the three, four times then, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Resignation letters. I'll start with, in order of how we probably have got them in. This one's addressed to Mr. Curry. Please accept my resignation from my position as business education teacher, head track and field coach, prom advisor, yearbook advisor, junior class advisor at Barnes County North Public School. My final day will be at the conclusion of the 22-23 school year, May 18th, 2023, excluding my unfinished responsibility related to the completion of the track and field season and the yearbook. I cannot begin to express what being able to work here over these last six years has meant to me. The staff and community are second to none and have become family. I hope that my future endeavors lead to half as rewarding as an experience as my time here has been. My employment here has afforded me uncounted opportunities and has helped me grow as both a person and a professional. I pray that the friendships and relationships with the people I have met here last a lifetime, and that I was able to have an impact, a positive impact on them during my time here. To the students, it has been an honor to be your teacher and coach. Thanks for everything. Sincerely yours, Nathan Brussell. So we would need a motion to accept that resignation letter.
I'll make a motion.
I mean.
Yeah, and I guess we gotta cut them loose, I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Cody?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay, next one, we have, Dear Barnes County North School Board. Please accept this letter as my formal notice of resignation from the position of teaching K-12 music at B C N. My last day of work will be May 21st, the end of the spring term. I assure you that I will be working closely with my replacement during this transitionary period to ensure that the students' learning is not negatively affected. I am willing to assist in any way possible. I'm pursuing a career through UPS to become a full-time delivery driver. Being a teacher at Barnes County North these past two years has been a great privilege as well as an invaluable learning experience. I'm grateful for the opportunity to allow you to let me teach. I will miss teaching music to the students very much. I can be reached at my personal phone or, or email, should you have any further questions. Should see regards, Alec Nelson.
Let's pull it off, make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second for Eric's?
Second.
Cody? Roll call there.
Cody?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Not as easy as just saying no and making them stay, you're in all kinds of trouble.
Next one we have is a retirement letter. Dear Mr. Curry and B C N School Board. Trying to inform you that I am retiring at the end of this school year. I have loved my time at B C N, and it has been a joy to work with the staff and students. I will be done at the end of this school year, 2022-23. Sincerely, Julie Kudner. That's just a retirement one, so we don't have to do anything.
Yes.
We do, still have to do it.
She needs it for TFFR.
She is for TFFR, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the retirement letter of Mrs. Kudner.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Cody?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And with all three of those, the exit forms, the exit interviews have been done? Okay, thank you.
And we wish them all the best in their future endeavors.
Okay, election board approval, we just need names, is all we need now?
Yep. Um, so we have four people, and I have with two alternates, in case people don't show up that day, so that they're board-approved. So the four are Rolene Richards, Mary Plum, Donna Harstead, and Al Garing, and then alternate, Amy, Emily Barnes.
Donna Harstead, and Al Garing, and then alternate, Amy, Emily Behrens, and Kurt Wagner.
We would need a motion to accept those officials.
I'll make a motion to accept the election board. No, what do I call it?
Election board, yeah.
Yep, that.
Is there a second?
I'll second Jen.
Roll call when you're ready, Lindsay.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Then we have, it'll order a little bit in our numbering, but aye, we have an open enrollment.
Yeah, I do somewhere. So these are the same ones we approved the waiver for. This would just be for the future, so they don't have to remember to do this again.
Okay, you need a motion to?
Motion, Jen, motion to accept open enrollment forms?
Is there a second?
Second.
Cody? You're ready, roll call.
Cody.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer. Jennifer.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
We need a motion. Okay, so then we're going to H on our agenda.
The top part?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is teacher negotiation strategy. This item may be discussed in an executive session only with, when an open meeting would have an adverse fiscal effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the board. The legal authority for closing this portion of the meeting is North Dakota Century Code, section four-four dash oh-four dash nineteen point one, parentheses nine. The topic or purpose of this executive session is teacher negotiation strategy. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the next item in executive session rather than in an open meeting. Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
A second?
I'll second.
So we got Michelle and who?
Eric.
Lee.
Which one you want to write?
Give it to Eric. We, we are, will be coming back. There's two items that will come back, so we will, if you guys are staying, we'll tell us where you're at, so we will come get you when we reconvene.
Tina's like, I will be in my room packing.
But there is items that are going to come back, so we've got. We have two items. We'll come get you when you're done. Then we got to turn that off. We need a roll call first. Lindsay, need a roll call to go to executive session?
Um, Eric.
What?
Roll call for executive session.
Hold roll.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yeah.
Don't stop it yet, because there's still more to read.
Cody.
If the motion for executive session?
So you can go ahead.
The executive session will be recorded. All members of the governing body are recommended to limit their discussion during the executive session to the announced topic. The prohibition of taking final action during the executive session does not apply to providing guidance or instructions to our negotiator. We will now ask the members of the public who are attending the meeting to leave their room. Cody Amen will be asked to leave the room due to conflict of interest. We anticipate adjourning the executive session and reconvening the open portion of the meeting at approximately?
That's a guess we guessed last time, so.
Seven fifty, eight fifteen, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock. The minutes will show that the executive session began at seven fifty three.
We got to let it.
Oh, yeah, let it be out first, sorry.
Yeah. So we are ending this at seven fifty-three.
Seven fifty-three. Okay, we're back in regular session at nine twenty-nine. Next item on the agenda is the library teacher position. Now we move to letter G. Mr. Curry?
Uh, library teacher. I recommend hiring Jody Olson for the librarian teacher position.
You need a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
We'll give it to Michelle.
Okay, this is for Jody Olson as library physician. Roll call, Lindsay.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Okay, that will be, you will inform that one, Mr. Curry?
I will, yeah.
Jay, we got next is staffing.
Staffing, first recommendation, I recommend hiring Sarah Anderson for elementary counseling position.
That recommendation is on the table. Is there a motion to approve?
So move to approve Sarah Anderson as the elementary counseling position.
I'll second.
Second by Michelle. Any other discussion there? Hearing none, roll call, Lindsay.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Approved. That's approved, so.
Okay, also under staffing, I recommend hiring Patrick O'Brien for halftime secondary teacher and halftime elementary Title I teacher.
I'll make a motion for that.
Motion by me. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Eric.
Oh, got it. Any other discussion there? If not, roll call, Lindsay.